You know, the new airport in Istanbul, the new one, not the old one, right? Is the most incredible thing you've, place you've ever seen.
I don't see anyone in the waiting room. I'm not sure who is speaking, but I don't, I don't see where we have anyone in the, in the waiting room currently. Okay. Okay, Anne. So Nick, I do have, I think you've answered, in the staff report, there is A, B, C, and D questions. But I just wanted to ask during the public hearing today of the applicant. Can you describe the trucks that will be used? Will they be single unit trucks? What will your haul trucks be like?
Okay, our, the trucks will be contractor trucks or customer trucks. We anticipate that they would be tandem trucks, which is like a dump truck. Or semis, tractor trailers, like 18-wheelers. Those are the trucks we anticipate having. We don't think that we would get any up trailers. Or, I think that's the multi-unit that you referred to. We don't anticipate that. And if that's a requirement, we'll just have to address that. But again, we're not running the trucks. The trucks will be customer-driven. But if that's a requirement, then we will not allow that.
Okay. The assumptions within the staff report, I did some calculations. Also, I think we talked that within the APEN calculations, there was a reference about 400 tons being transported to the mill. And we just speak to that quickly because that was still in the application.
Right, so in the application, this is a seasonal operation. And, and our demand is going to be based on who the customers are at any particular time. The reason we asked for 400 tons a day as a maximum is, is just to have a maximum limit. In, so we want to have the ability to operate at least to a, to a value of 400 tons a day when that's needed. You know, it's hard to say, but we would anticipate that probably we would be running more like, you know, between 150 and 250 tons a day on a steady basis. But we may get big orders that require a more maximum number. So, and George, if I misspeak here, please, we're, you know, we're on the record, so make sure we say it right. Our APEN was estimated for a 400 tonne a day operation. So, so we have an air permit, if you will, that allows us.
Let me clarify. The APEN's basically it's air pollution limitation. The state has a model in which you run houses on based on your mitigation technique on the ground, plus the number of tons you're going to move over the year. When you run that model, the model basically says you don't even need, in other words, you don't have to do anything. So as a result, in our model, which is documented in the CUP, states that we do not have to even inform anybody of it because it is going to be compliant with Colorado air quality requirements. Now, with that said, to be transparent, all of this can be documented in a formal report, documenting that, in addition to that, I can get a notification or a letter from CUPG air quality, stating that the model is appropriate, and I will actually validate the analysis if that's required. Or somebody wants it.
I guess just to speak to that real quick, George, that we'll, I'll talk a little bit more about that on the staff presentation, but yeah, that will be very much required, based on our response from CUPG. Nick, can you also speak to potential for off-site damage or someone on the team?
We don't anticipate, and I talked a little bit about it during the presentation. Our, we deliberately plan to stay in the slag area and stay away from existing infrastructure from quite a distance. We basically have a haul road that separates our operations from, from existing infrastructure. And again, the only area of infrastructure that, that might be at risk is where we drive over our, over the sewer lines and water line for sanitation now. Now, well, not the water line for sanitation, just the sewer line. And, and that is, that sewer line is quite adept. And, and it's really not going to pose any, any issue. We had our, the culvert was designed by an independent engineer. And load limits and all that were considered in that design. So there really is, there's no meaningful area for, for, for damage of property. You know, we are driving on roads and there'll be wear and tear on the roads, but that's, that's, that's normal wear and tear that, you know, everyone, just part of your trucking permit, right? That takes care of that work. But no damage, that's not really damage, that's just normal wear and tear.
Okay. And I think more over the discussion, if you can kind of elaborate on where you are with local sanitation, on the structure agreement, the need for it, and kind of where you're at with the mail.
Right, so, yes, so local sanitation had, had two points that was of concern. One was, are we going to damage or do harm to the sewer line? And one was, are we going to do harm to the water line? So for the sewer line, we brought in a professional surveyor and had the sewer line surveyed. Because we could never find in the public records any easement or location of that sewer line. So apparently when it was built, none of that was filed. So CJK hired a surveyor, went out, surveyed it, and provided a map to sanitation with a legal description that shows not just the sewer line location, but easements. 35-foot easement throughout the entire property as recommended by sanitation, except in the area, the water area that we showed. Because it's a little wetter, they requested a 50-foot easement, so 25 feet right aside. So we honored that as well. We provided to that, that information to Mr. Fatter last week, or the week before? Last week. And there's a couple of minor issues that need to be in the, in the legal description. It's just kind of a technical thing, but they're satisfied with that. And the other item is that we were going to locate the water line. And we thought we could do that simply by bringing in a location service. But apparently the water line is two-inch PVC pipe. It can't be located using conventional methods. Then we hired the same locator to bring in a vacuum truck, a pothole-in machine, to go and suck out the rocks and physically locate the, couldn't do that because the boulders in there are so big that the vacuum truck couldn't bring them out. So we're, we're at a point now where we're probably going to recommend the sanitation that there, we can't really locate the line. However, we do know that the line is on the south side of the highway. So it was, first thought it was on the north side. But, but we've kind of determined that it's really on, through where we're going to be crossing at Highway, or excuse me, County Route 23, it is in fact on the south side of the highway. So we're not going that direction, so we're not affecting the water line. And so to be clear to everyone, those are the conditions that sanitation requested. I truly believe that they're happy with our progress so far. But I can tell you, they have not signed off on it yet. Okay, so, but we do believe we will get that sign off. Certainly, that will be a condition to the CUP. It's certainly a condition to our permit of the state. But we are working with them diligently and have been to get those items resolved.
Thank you. That just leads into a condition of the CUP. And so when we get to that part of staff's presentation, I just wanted to have that context to be able to further explain why that was necessary. And I think you've answered why the other question that was in the staff report was about a timeline of the project. So an estimated timeline is about 16 years approximately, does that make sense?
Again, market-driven. You know, market's going to determine how quick or how slow we can, we can. Obviously, we want it done as quickly as possible, but market allows, so what we can do.
So this application was reviewed to the following agencies: Lake County Sheriff's Department, Lake County Public Health, Lake County Public Works, Lake County Environmental Health, Lake County Leadville, Lake County Fire Rescue, Lake County Airport Advisory Board, the Lake County Office of Emergency Management, Lake County Wildfire Community Protection Plan, Colorado Division of Parks and Wildlife, Colorado Department of Transportation, Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, USDA Natural Resources Conservation Service, City of Leadville, Leadville Sanitation and Park for Water, along with the Community Development Team. And their responses, staff has provided a pretty good description within the staff report. You will notice that there are, I think that mining is probably the use with the most abundant amount of standards associated with it, rightfully so, of course. And so many of those standards that, they're, they're all within the staff report. Many of them align automatically with a DRMS permit and what is required of the applicant to submit. There's a few things that are specific to the land development code, such as the noise level, the 70 decibels at the perimeter is a statutory requirement as well as a land development requirement. But many of them are overlapping. The other thing I think that's built into motion, if a motion for approval was to be brought forward, this operation always has to track with those standards that are contained within the land development code. I think it's also really important to note that with any technical application of this nature, there are so many partners involved in this on a state and local level. So we have Colorado Department of Mining, Safety and Reclamation, DRMS. We have Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, CUPG, who's looking at the air quality associated with this operation. We have Colorado Department of Transportation, CDOT. We have the EPA, this was Opera Board Unit 03, where the recorded decision that Nick spoke about, where we evaluated this material and the decision was that it would be appropriate for the type of use that's intended under the permit. We have a lot of agencies involved, IMSA. So that we have a lot of partners as we look at approving this conditional use permit. And so our job today, or the job before the planning commission and the board, is to look more at land use and zoning with a certain amount of reliance on these agencies to partner with us to make sure that quality and site controls are in place and that this is a safe operation for the residents of the community. There are things present within the report that kind of highlight that. The fine slag buyer purchase agreement. This really outlines, I thought it was very good to have this in the report because it really outlines the method by which the fine slag is sold as well as how it's treated on-site, and all of the requirements, and how the EPA's concerned about this material being encapsulated into certain uses. And so there's, there's a lot of discussion in the staff report about that. But I think that that's really what the basis of kind of the reporting on it by staff to the planning commission and the board, that was really the focus, was making sure that all of the agencies that should be tracking with an operation of this type have been included. We've heard from them, we've had good conversations with them and gotten good data from them, and it's all included within the staff report. The pain points that staff really tried to look at mitigating through the suggested conditions of approval are traffic, air quality. And I think those are, those are two of the biggest. Making sure that we haven't created the situation where we're putting residents in jeopardy in a variety of different fashions. So I'm going to go ahead and provide the recommended conditions of approval if an approval were determined to be appropriate. And so those are prior to the start of operation, a fully signed and issued CDOT access permit is submitted. We've been, we've seen lots of documentation on it. We believe that based on their traffic study, they will not have to put ACDC lanes in. But we do need the final signed permit. We have full confidence that it has been approved, but we just don't have a copy of it. So we need to get a copy for the file. A copy of CJK's fine slag buyer purchase agreement document, just so we can again submit it in the file. It's outlined in the staff report, all the steps that are required for that. A copy of Union Mill Corporation's handbook for submitted, be submitted for the file. Nick talked about the relationship between Union Mill Corporation and CJK. And there's a reference in the buyer's purchase agreement that references this handbook. So we just want a copy of that for the file to make sure that it's complete. A copy of the location survey and subsequent engineers' report concerning the structure agreement with Leadville Sanitation be submitted for the file when it's completed. That's what Nick was just referencing. A copy of the structure agreement with Leadville Sanitation be submitted for the file when it's completed. So the survey and the agreement itself. The next was something that staff would suggest. We really heard back from the city of Leadville, a strong concern about the truck route and what kind of impact that would have on specifically Harrison Avenue and then Ninth Street and Pavler going out northbound out of the community. And so in, in light of their concerns, we really dove into how much of an increase the truck traffic would have on an annual basis. And these, my, I would say if we went to no more than 20 trucks a day, it's going to decrease kind of that, we were thinking it was about a 14% truck increase annually. And that'll probably drop it down to somewhere between 10 and 14% increase annually of what the kind of truck volume that's already occurring. And so the next condition is really brought on to honor the concerns of the city. We all know what traffic is like in the summer months and how much of, some good planning needs to go into any additional operation on Harrison Avenue because of the current demand that we're experiencing. So this is a, the proposal predicts the haul route will be split approximately 50/50 between trucks leaving the site either in northern or southern direction. I will say that staff anticipates that it'll be a greater than 50/50. Strong belief that probably the market base might be more to the north, but that will be seen. So the applicant will prepare an annual report identifying the amount of truck traffic traveling through the city of Leadville. Should it result in more than 70% of the total off-site haul traffic and/or any identified issues regarding negative impacts to the city, the county reserves the right to read as it's a matter with the applicant to explore any possible mitigation. So really wanted to honor the city and just consider what impacts we, their certainty that, that, you know, there is going to be some, but maybe this is a way in which to mitigate it and then also monitor it and have the operation report back to the county. The operation shall be limited pursuant to CDOT's access permit to four trucks either in or out of the site per hour. And the condition here says with no more than 24 trips a day. But I heard Nick say that they were thinking more, no more than 20 trips per day, is that?
That's correct, but to clarify though, a trip is round trip. It's not in and out. So, so the way we understand the CDOT report is it's, a trip is, is a round trip.
So the way, I would tell you that, that the intent of this is that we did 24 trips at, conservatively 14, I think, I don't know if it was 14 or 15 tons per truck, would equate to, I think, 360 tons a day.
Correct, correct. So it depends on the size of the truck, whether it's a, so your calculations are correct depending if we're using a tandem truck or an 18-wheeler, tractor-trailer truck.
Right, right. And so trying to go maybe on that more conservative of 14 or 15. So we're thinking that, that, you know, a maximum would be 400 tons. So the 24, from the way that we have written this in here, would be 24 trips being total. Not a trip equaling, and I know that transportation standards would be that a trip is in and out, but that would then mean 48, and that far exceeds, I think, what you would need or want when you're saying 20 trips. So when you say 20 trips that you'd be willing to commit to, then our 24, we're still fine, right? We're still, you're saying 20 meaning no more than 20 in and out. I, I don't know, can we clarify that?
I think he's saying 40 total, 20 round trips.
Okay.
20 round trips, correct.
20, 20.
40, so 20 ins and 20 outs, right?
20 ins and 20 outs.
Okay, so that exceeds the amount because of, okay, so right, so only that would only, because your return is empty.
Correct, correct, because using your definition.
We would only be allowed 10 trips.
Your return is empty, okay.
And 10 trips, that even if we had 20, 10 trucks, that's 200 tons.
Yep, absolutely, okay. So, but we'll reduce that with no more than 20 trips per day and define it that. So we'll reduce that to no more than 20 trips per day.
And those are round trips.
Right, right.
Okay, just so we're clear.
Yeah, yeah. CJK may request a temporary increase in the trips per day based on market demand. The B OCC will consider these requests during a regular meeting. So if you ever wanted to exceed, or if the applicant ever wanted to exceed 20 trips, or then that would be a time to come back. We have other operations currently in Lake County, specifically ACA, that comes to the board to ask for an increase in trips. And so we look at that on a case-by-case basis.
We really don't anticipate more than that. That's pretty much our capacity of what we can produce. I mean, we may be able to do a little bit more any given day, but we're going to pay for it. We do 460 trips one day, we'll only do 460 tons in one day. We might be able to only do 300 the next, so 400 is kind of a limit for us.
I have a clarification too. I see that there's a minimum number of trucks per hour. One of the things that if you're going to a large construction, say asphalt, maybe on pavement, two trucks an hour will not serve the purpose of that road because you have to have more trucks lined up so you don't really get the structure activity. So I'd like to work with the county to say if those particular projects come up, we'd like to be able to come up and be able to get more trucks depending on contract requirements.
So that's built into the, you know, that.
Market demand request.
Right, CJK may request a temporary increase in the trips. And we can put trips per day based on the market demand. So does that meet your needs of it? Number 10, the operation will operate Monday through Saturday. During community events when Harrison Avenue is closed, the city of Leadville portion of the truck route will be closed. And that was also.
No north traffic.
Right.
On those days.
Should Lake County determine a bypass route is a feasible approach to mitigating traffic congestion, the applicant and the county shall revisit the haul truck route in a collaborative manner. So just to expand on that, we have had some conversations with Public Works that a bypass road would serve the community probably in a variety of different ways. Taking Highway 24 to 300, to 5A, to 4999, you know, that, that bypass way around. But, but right now, those county roads aren't built to a specification that can accommodate this kind of truck volume or tonnage. So future conversations are, I think, in the works about the ability and the feasibility of that. And so this would just require the applicant to come back if we are at a point to have those conversations and look at a way to mitigate that traffic.
And we, we check that route and, and, you know, if it becomes available, we could commit to just using that all the time. Whether or not it becomes.
Yeah, I think, I think that's, you know, our hope is that obviously a bypass road is something that we've been in conversation with staff as in Public Works and it's kind of a collaborative county dive in and look at the feasibility of that. Number 12, it'd be prior to the start of operations, but not necessarily the start of site preparations, applicant shall consult with the Department of Public Health and Environment Air Quality Control Division to determine which is necessary, an APEN, a permit or an exemption, as the case may be, and submit a copy of the same to the county. So in talking to Air Quality Control with the division, with the Colorado, with CUPG, based on the calculations that were submitted in the DRMS permit, their volume wouldn't warrant, as George had said at this point, an APEN. However, it doesn't excuse the operation from the Air Quality Commission regulations and standards. As well as, they also said that that determination within the DRMS permit isn't an actual exemption. So they haven't, they haven't issued a decree of that. So what we are asking them, the applicant, is to consult with CUPG and provide us with one of those three. Also, they will be our agency in the event that we are concerned about air quality and dust control. If something is happening on-site, then they are our agency that will come in and affirm and assure that the operation is being properly operated as far as air quality. Number 13, all representations made in the application and the hearing shall be considered as conditions of approval. And then number 14 is just restating a standard that's associated with mining. And that is if the youth has not operated or is, and if no material or if no material has been extracted within three years of continuing traditional use permit and a request for extension has not been received and approved by the Board of County Commissioners, the conditional use permit will expire. Extension request shall provide information concerning the factors and reasons for the request. The Board of County Commissioners will consider these factors and reasons as well as the extent conditions have changed in the area, if any, in granting extensions. So just want to make sure that that was just highlighted in the event, for whatever reason, operations don't begin in the allotted timeframe. So just kind of raise it up and highlight that. So those are the suggested conditions. And happy to answer any concerns or questions that you may have or defer to the applicant if necessary. But staff report in its 26 pages is pretty technical and does really dive into a lot of the discussion that was had with the different agencies. So I think. So I think.
Sorry, but just for, just for clarification, can you read the one about the, with Leadville sanitation?
Oh, yes. So one is just, one is just the agreement and one is the survey. So we would get a copy of the survey and then we get a copy of the agreement when it's signed.
You read one about getting the structural agreement.
The structure agreement.
Of the structure agreement.
The structure agreement.
Okay. I, I think, I understand the intent of what you're asking, and I just want to clarify your intent. In, in the permitting process, we, when you permit, you find who your neighbors are and then you send a structure agreement to them that says, we tend to do these, these, these operations in your next door. And these are the structures that we identified that could possibly be damaged. And if we cause any damage, we will be solely responsible for that damage. That's the document that we send to each neighbor. Those neighbors decide whether they wish to sign it or not sign it. If they sign it, then it becomes a legal contractor that's executed and all that, and we honor it. If they choose not to sign it, that doesn't mean we don't get, at that point, we will bring in an engineer, an independent engineer, structural engineer, who writes an engineering report that says, I looked at this, and, and he states his conclusion. And then that conclusion goes to the file, and that satisfies the state requirement. So the way I understand this is that if we give you a structure agreement, it satisfies your requirement, but that's not enough. So I'm adding, I'm not taking away to your condition. I want to add to that because, but the situation is, is that in this situation, the state or the state received a concern letter from sanitation saying that we're really concerned about our structures. In this case, this is relying on the water line. And, and, and so we need to have that resolved. The state came back to us and said, you guys need to resolve this issue before we make your permit valid. Okay? So you should add those words to it, that Leadville sanitation satisfied that we've addressed their concerns, along with just the structure agreement because, or the engineering report, because we already have an engineering report. So in a, in a sense, we've already met that condition, but really, we haven't met the intent, as I understand what you're saying. What you guys want to make sure is, is that Leadville sanitation is, is okay with what we did, and we're willing to accept that responsibility. And so I would suggest maybe you can add to that.
Okay.
Okay? Make it worse for us.
Happy to do something. Yeah, just, just taking it from your, from your application, you know, that you're working with Leadville Sanitation and Mr. Bain to develop a mutual acceptable structural agreement to that end.
So we can say a Leadville-approved structural agreement, Leadville Sanitation.
Well, yeah, it, it's right. I don't know how to say that, because we have, Leadville doesn't have to approve the structural agreement.
I would just think that by the, they don't have to approve the agreement.
But, but again, I don't want to, we don't want to walk away from this responsibility. We just want to make sure that it's clear. Because if Leadville Sanitation reads it, they say, well, no, no, we have an objection still. And, and just because they have a structural agreement doesn't mean they satisfy that objection. So we want to overcome that. We want to work with them and get that resolved.
Just about it. Then we won't call it a structural agreement.
We can say a copy of the structure agreement, but then in the end of that sentence, we can just say, and all outstanding concern, concerns by Leadville Sanitation have been met.
Are satisfied.
Are satisfied.
Their concerns are satisfied or something like that, because that closes the loop for you guys.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, Leadville will come back to you guys, what are you guys doing? We have a complaint here and you're approving it. We don't want that. That just causes trouble.
Okay, Anne, I'm gonna start with public comment. Zoomers, if any of you have any desire to have public comment, if you can just put forward a note in the chat to Anne, then we'll put you on the list. I'm gonna go through the list of people in the room first, and then we'll go to you guys on soon.
The chat is disabled, so if you want to enable it, that would be great.
Okay. Did we have a little chat? Sorry. Go ahead to the.
I would have done the same.
Isn't it in the, it's in the little, I think it might be the little dot, the little arrow dots right there.
Everyone?
Yeah. Sorry, it's what after I.
Jim, is that working?
Uh, let's see. Yes. Oh, wait. Yeah, it's working.
Yeah, just a request on chat is that there's not a bunch of dialogue going back and forth through chat, just perfect, like Ruth just did. We'll just add you to the list that way, please. Okay, first on my list here is Patty Nagel.
I wrote a little something very quickly. So the Romanian investigation conducted by the Denver and Rio Grande Western Railroad in nineteen ninety-two determined through their own before-mentioned investigation that railroads lack poses no hazard to human health and the environment. Yet, when my children were very young, it was recommended to me for them or any of us to not wear their shoes inside the house due to potential exposure to heavy metals in the slag due to the railroad tracks on our property. I hope that staff is willing to take into consideration the health and safety and welfare of the immediate neighbors. A lot of us are very close to the project site. In reading through, reading through your report, as staff noted on page fifteen regarding the crushing of the slag, it will inevitably generate particulate matter. By staff's own admission, quote, "However small the hazard of lead, cadmium, arsenic, and zinc is atomizing any of it seems to be a particularly bad idea," end quote. This combined with the fact that the applicant states, and I know you already addressed this about the APEN not being required because that estimated admissions from proposed crushing does not trigger the permit supplemental requirements, even though it allows for one hundred and fifty to two hundred and twenty-five tons per day, which conflicts with the four hundred tons per day stated by the applicant. I would think that these factors alone should satisfy a lot of consideration and approval of this cup. Additionally, the, I thought it was twenty-four truck trips per day, but I guess forty-eight will create an undue burden on the transportation around Lake County. I don't think I have to tell anyone in this room how crazy and congested the traffic in Lake County has become seasonally throughout the year and combined with our ever-growing population. And this, this also should be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Gary Sifka. Or I'm sorry, Gary Sifka. No, okay. Stephen Craig.
No comments.
Okay. Um, George Robinson.
No comment.
Hey, Jill Cooper.
Hi, Lake County resident, criminal attorney, sustainability expert for about thirty years. My first job was at CDPHG. I was their in-house air attorney, and then I went on to help them create their first sustainability program. So I had pollution prevention, environmental justice, and all of this idea of circular economy. It was under, on my, under my watch at CDPHG. I do agree, there's always concerns on air quality. I just know the air division is very stringent. They do a very good job on modeling and permitting. I was their enforcement attorney for five years. They, they really are quite thorough. And, and again, as, as somebody who lives there and around this area, I would want them to do their job as a trusted partner, as I think you guys indicated, another agency. The mining agency is also, I worked with them for years. They're also very good at issuing permits and knowing when something's mining and when something's reclamation and remediation. So I trust that that group really knows how to review and write a permit that's gonna stop anybody from going from reclamation or remediation into the mining. They're not gonna let them do it without all the permits and all the public comments that they need. Overall, I think, as Mr. Michael said, having done sustainability for thirty years now, we have been wanting in the state, and I have friends that work for the AG's office that have been fighting to allow companies to take on residual mining, waste, and turn it into a product. There's just a lot of liability with it, and the fact these guys are willing to take the liability and try to make money off of this. The Good Samaritan law that we've been wanting to get passed for decades at the state level and the national level has never been able to get through all the various legislative levels of, could we just give somebody the ability to clean something up about the liability? These guys are taking the liability and they're gonna turn it into a product. Again, this is what towns in the West around the country have been wanting to do for a long time. I think it's exciting if Leadville and Lake County can show people how to do it safely, appropriately, with the right permits, right, traffic manager plans. I've done that my whole career as well on traffic management, and very important to have timing restrictions and everything. But I do applaud the, the staff here. It sounds like they've done a really thorough job of adding on additional requirements. So if anyone has any questions about air, let me know. Give it a long time. Thank you.
Thanks. Diane Smith.
I'm sorry, I'm not used to sitting to speak because I'm an attorney and I stand up.
You're going ahead. Whatever's going on.
I came, I came with one set of concerns that have really been exacerbated, but I would, I would say that CJK invited a number of us from, an organization that was formed two years ago, Concerned Citizens of Lake County, to pour the mill last week. And five of us on that particular day went. One of the questions I asked very specifically was, please show me on a map exactly what, exactly the pattern for truck traffic for this whole thing, start at seventy, start wherever you want, but definitely through Leadville, through Lake County. The answer I got was, we're still working on it. See nothing in the staff report that indicates that's been resolved at all. The reason it's really important is, you can't, you can't say we're gonna go up this street or down that street without letting the people that live on that street know that they, what they are up against in terms of truck traffic. Now, the round trip thing is just fascinating because if somebody read the report, they would think we're talking twenty-four. And that's what I did some of my math, and which was completely wrong, because now we are talking, even at twenty, we're talking forty. And then this gentleman says, if there's a big project that needs more than four trucks to be going up there in an hour, more than, more than four trucks in an hour, you really have to give us permission to do that, because otherwise you're gonna slow down that other project, which is probably not gonna be in Lake County, by the way. So how do you address the issue for the citizens of this county to, to feel that they are safely heard and that we understand exactly where these trucks are gonna go? Big deal, they're not gonna run into the Fourth of July parade. I'm so pleased to know that. But saying that they'll go around or they'll just go south is absurd and without very, very, very specific qualifications of the route that they have to take. I don't know how you can say that them filing an annual report way after the fact, you could make it three hundred and sixty-five days after they've started, and there could have been huge problems, but all you're requiring is that once a year, they tell you what they've done. I'm sorry, I think it's absurd. I think, I've read a number of the conditional use permits. I'm always very interested that a lot of the conditions can be met after you start operations. How do you know that you're not gonna, that you're not gonna have air problems until you've started the project? Models are great, but they are models, and they make me very specifically, they might, you might tell me that they're a hundred percent good, always accurate. You don't know that until it's happened. And so for every one of those conditional use permits or conditions, you make sure that they have to. It's, the qualification has to be from day one.
I have no comment. Frank Crum. Gary Nippa. And Nick Michael. Yeah, I'm sorry. Just reading on the list here. Stephanie. And, all right, Zoomers, I can scroll to the top of that list. Hey, Ruth, on Zoom, you are up.
Can you, can you hear me okay?
You're good.
Okay, I'm good. All right. So obviously, my name is Ruth Golzer, and I am a landowner in Lake County. I would like to address the number four in your report that says that the proposed conditional use is not likely to be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare of county residents, or to cause hardship for neighboring persons. In that report, there's a little thing at the bottom of that section where it says, this is a staff comment or recommendation. It is difficult to say that there are no discernible health, safety, or welfare issues for the neighbors or the county residents, but staff suggests that adequately conditioned, this application can be approvable. Now, it's not clear to me just what criteria the staff is basing their opinion on, but I would like to say that I believe we can say that the neighbors and the residents of the county and the city will face health and safety and welfare consequences. Anybody with respiratory problems, be it asthma or COPD or long COVID, and, and also other health challenges, will have discernible issues due to the fugitive dust and the questionable air quality. Now, should your conditions that you're listing for the CUP, or the CUP, I guess, be instituted, I want to bring up the whole issue of monitoring, because I would like to know exactly how those conditions are gonna be monitored by the county. And I do not want to hear or accept this self-monitoring or self-reporting after the fact. That's just not acceptable. So I think that the application should be denied based on the fact that this criteria cannot be adequately conditioned and certainly not monitored. And I would like to further point out, and this will relate to traffic, but the traffic relates to health and safety of our county residency, our county residents, that, the way I count this too, after listening to this whole exchange, is the report said twenty-four trucks or trips. I thought that meant twenty-four trucks a day, but clearly now it's twenty trips, but those trips are round trip. So that's forty trucks a day for six days a week going through our entire county. And I don't see how forty large commercial semis, double trailers, whatever he said, trucks a day, six days a week, traveling through the county, that would be a huge threat to everybody's health and safety and welfare. And I don't mean just our residents or just the neighboring people that live in that area, but I think that will hit our tourists, who are a huge part of our revenue, and we hope become more so, and anybody, anybody using twenty-four. So I would additionally like to point out, and I think this is really important to consider, that if CJK and Union Milling get their state and county permits to operate the Leadville Mill, which is immediately adjacent to the slag project, which you saw in the pictures, they're gonna be using the same roads through the city and county. So there's a double, there's a potential for doubling the number of trucks that are rumbling through our streets. And I don't want anyone to consider that those two projects are exactly separate. Some will say they're unrelated, but in terms of traffic, noise, fugitive dust, and air pollution, and therefore the welfare of all of us who are in Lake County, there's a definite and very discernible relationship. And again, this will affect everybody. And in conclusion, because I only have three minutes, I understand, I am respectfully asking that the Planning Commission deny the application of CJK and Union Milling for the Arkansas slag project. Thank you very much.
Okay, I have a key word on there, and I'd like you to say your full name and address as you're next on the list.
Yes, Derek Wood, and I'm one of the neighbors, right, that was shown on the map there. I live at 13765 US Highway 24. Just one quick comment that I just wanted to, would like to see clarified in this cup, if it were to be approved, would be the future land use, and what would be allowed to be done with it after we clean it up. I guess what I would like to ensure that we don't do is clean up one dump site, and then only to have more stuff dumped on the site afterwards, making sure that we aren't just cleaning it up in order to stack more tailings on. Thank you.
Thanks. Jim?
Yes, Jim Callmose, and my camera is acting very temperamentally right now, so you just see my picture there. Thank you. Thank you to all of you for a great presentation, Nick, for Annie, for going through all the staff report and the serious examination of all the different issues. I will say that I've been a property owner in Leadville for almost two decades. We initially came to Leadville to invest in property almost two decades ago, but have fallen in love and with Leadville and lived there, live in Leadville part-time, and will likely live there 100% of our time soon. I do belong to an informal neighborhood group called, and you've already heard it already, the Concerned Citizens for Lake County. We're an informal group, I'm not speaking on their behalf today, but the mission of the CC for LC is to advance responsible industrial development and also facilitate smart environmental stewardship, balancing stewardship and environmental stewardship with responsible industrial development. And when I first saw and heard about the slag project, I was very excited that perhaps we had a project that was to balance these two really important issues for our county and for the well-being of our community. But in digging deeper into the project and hearing more tonight even, and the eloquence of some of my neighbors here, including my wife, that it just brings me to those two issues that Annie, you, you did identify, and Nick, you did too, air and traffic. And you've already heard the deep concerns that people have for these two really important issues. And the question is, for the Planning Commission, do you want to put the health and well-being of our citizens at risk for a commercial project like this that initially sounds great, but can be really detrimental and extractive from our community and puts us in serious jeopardy? So I won't go into the arguments that Diane eloquently discussed, and Patty, and Ruth, and Derek, but I just wanna just have the Planning Commission pause for a moment and just think about what this is, what this can really mean to our community. So thank you again for all the great work that you've done, the write-ups and the great presentations. Really appreciate the concerns that you've raised in allowing us to discuss our concerns as well. And I hope you'll make the right decision to deny the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Betty Benson?
There you go. You should be live.
Can you hear me? I don't think you can see me, but you can hear me. Betty Benson, 13769 Highway 24 South. Our property is right on the border with the mill site. I have questions to ask. The first one is kind of a follow-on from the air quality issue we've already spent some time on, and I'm wondering if there is a way to measure the air quality, anything that could be placed within the county, close to the slag site, maybe close to the homes on our road, that would help us to recognize if there is an air quality issue. The second question is, will there be any slag brought to the site for crushing other than what is already located at that slag site? Are there any chemicals that will be used at that reclamation site? Because I couldn't find anything about it, but I still feel I needed to ask that question. I don't necessarily object to reclamation of that material. That would indeed be nice, but there are these various issues that we've brought up that I think need a little more consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. George Benson?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. One is, we flew over the site and you showed me a big brown spot that is gonna be the remediated area, and then you showed us a lay-down area. I have concerns about the lay-down area, the first being, what are the, what are the exact uses of that lay-down area? And I want to be assured that that lay-down area is for equipment used or materials used at, for this project and this project only. That's, that's number one. Number two, there's a lot of deprecated and abandoned equipment on the site now, and is that going to be displaced in the lay-down area and left, or is that going to be cleaned up and removed when the, when the project is done or, you know, during the project's lifespan? And third, I would like the county commissioners to think about whether or not industrial zoning is the highest and best use for that property. You have a significant amount of road or area right next to Highway 24, and it just seems to me that some kind of, maybe a lighter industrial or retail zoning would be more appropriate there. So those are the three things I wanted to, wanted to get some clarification or make comments on. And thank you for your time.
Thanks, George. Real quick, I'm just gonna, the lay-down area is not a part of this conditional use permit application. It's a possibility, I think the applicant was letting us know that they may include that or add that in a later time, but that would require a whole new hearing where we would then discuss that. So those pieces will not be considered or approved. They would have no approval to use that lay-down area as of right now until they were to come to us with that new application. So tonight, the lay-down area isn't part of the conversation. I think it was just to let people know that that could be a future ask down the road. And then I'll just speak really quickly, and then we can have that as part of the conversation, as far as I am zoning right there. And I would say that likely the reason it's zoned mining industrial right now is because as it sits, it's probably the best name to call it with the slag piles on it. But I agree with you that should those be removed, that likely isn't the best use. And I think that could be something that's considered down the road for sure, as far as a rezone application. I, unless there's anybody that I've missed in the public for comment, raise your hand or add yourself into chat. I am gonna go ahead and let the applicant make one final response to these questions, and then I will turn it to the county commissioners and Planning Commission for their questions.
Thank you. I'm gonna try to go through these, and if I miss one, please, my apologies. Okay. Mrs. Smith said, she asked a question about haul routes, and we didn't give her an answer. To be clear, that tour was a mill tour, and it was for the mill permit, and it has, it did not involve the slag permit. The mill, which is a whole different issue, right, that we need to come across and have this whole process again for the mill. The mill proposes to haul material from up in, up in Resil area, historic mining area, and treat that material. That would involve bringing the material down a haul road. That is the haul road that we do not know where it's gonna be. It's not the slag. Slag is very specific. The slag will either go south on Highway 24, or it will go north on Highway 24, as it goes through town appropriately in the route. Those are definitively the routes. So, so, once, once we figure out what we can do with the mill, because the proposed road, you know, brings it through the corner of a neighborhood, that's, that's an issue we're working with, and we do not have a solution for that. So the response she got during the tour was a correct response. Okay. Air and traffic. Okay, I'm gonna go through Mrs. Benson's questions, because they were like specific questions. And then, Jim, I'll see if I can answer that question of yours as well. Is there a way to measure quality? There is a way to measure quality. There's air monitoring stations, and we would not be opposed to putting up an air quality monitoring station on our property, on our side of the property, along the, the west side. So it'd be the mill property, right? But that's, that's the area that's closest to the concerned citizens. And we would, we would come into that, and that's just good practice. And we can have that set up and start measuring and getting a baseline, probably as early as the spring, or, you know, I don't know if we could do it in the winter. George, you're gonna have to comment on that. We can start getting a baseline of air quality right now, and then provide that information monthly or however, however we're asked to do that. In terms of monitoring truck traffic, someone may mention that question, we can do that monthly as well. We could do that weekly as well, if the county requests a weekly report. That information is gonna be gathered anyway, it's gathered as a core, as a matter of course, in our, in our sales, so we know who we're selling to and how many truckloads are going. So we know where they're going. It's just a, it's just a matter of reporting that information to the county. And it could be weekly if the county so desires. Will more slag be brought in? No, no more slag will be brought in. Once that material on that property is depleted, we are done. That project will be done. Our plan is, as you saw in our, in our video, was to just leave just graded land, and that land can be developed any way that the county sees fit. Right now, it's, it's industrial and mining. If the county wants to rezone it, that's, that's the purpose of it. It's, it's to clean something up and make it available for a better use, for a greater and better use. Because right now, it's not. It's just, it will perpetually be a big slag pile, as it is. So are any chemicals gonna be used? No, there's no chemicals here. This is not a chemical process, it's a sorting process. So aggregates are sold by grades, gradations, by sizes. So, so different products, different products is just different sizes of aggregate. And we will do is, we will screen those aggregates to get the right mixes of size fractions to meet a specification of whatever the order is, a little bit of this, a little bit of that. And in instances where we may have bigger material, where we need smaller material, in those instances, we will crush that material. So, so there will be crushing, but there's not, every, every ton of material is not gonna run through the crusher, only a fraction of it. And that fraction is a function of what the market requires, and how much that material we have that meets a spec, or how much we need to crush. We can't possibly anticipate what that is until we get an order from, from a client. The abandoned line equipment, that, or the mining equipment, and there's some trash trucks up there, and all that, and that Mr. Benson is talking about, all that equipment belongs to our neighbor to the, to the east, Mr. Dietrich, Orin Dietrich. We talked to Orin about that, and he's agreed to move it out of there once we, you know, once we get started. But, you know, it's, it's good housekeeping to run that stuff up, and, and there's some tires and some other things that really need to be disposed of. Those will be properly disposed of in a landfill eventually, but they're up to the north and outside of our disturbance area. But, but it is our plan to clean that stuff up, and we are in discussions with Mr. Dietrich to move that equipment. Whatever iron and scrap material he does not want, we have a person that has expressed an interest to just come and haul it away. So they can get like scrap value for it. So I don't have a deal with that person yet, so I don't wanna mention their name, but I can if you want, but I'd rather not in the public. Future zoning, you address that. Traffic, you know, yes, you know, we, it's the reality. The reality is, is we'd like to move at least 400 tons a day, have that capability. I don't know that, you know, we're ever gonna be able to do that. I'm sure that there'll be times where we can do that, but, you know, to make our, our operation viable, we need to have the ability to, to move that kind of volume. It's just like, not much to say about it. The bigger trucks we use, the less of them we'll use. And that's why we're, we're gonna encourage the use of, of, you know, big semi tractor trailers, that, that will reduce maybe one or two truck capacity or, well, in these calculations for trucks. And those, you know, they are, they are correct calculations using assumptions that you guys. So I, have I, have I missed some, something? George?
Let me just add a little clarification on the air permit, on the air quality issue. In the modeling, it requires a water body to be used in crushing. It requires a screen. Anytime, it also requires water during dumping. So when you take a look at the major dust areas that can be generated, they're controlled through water sprays. So I wanted to say that there's mitigation already built into the model, but I wasn't very clear when I presented the presentation.
Yeah, and the last question, Mr. Wood asks about future use. The, the future use is open, right? So if, you know, the way I understand it, I may be wrong, but once we're done with this operation, we can't do anything else without a new permit and a whole condition of use process. So, so, so it's not the intention to bring more waste there to remove it. The intention is, is history and geography place that material there. And our, our, you know, our company mission is to remove that material, not to create more material, right? It's a remediation process. So, so in any one of these projects that we do, once that area is remediated, it's done. And if it's a forest, you know, we would replant it with trees or natural vegetation. The reason we propose to just leave it as graded material is because it's a, it's a, it's for future development. So why would we plant trees if it's gonna be developed into anything? So that would be an open item, right? And again, anything that we would do would be, would come through this process again. Mr. Wood, I hope that answers, I hope that is actually answered for you.
Go ahead. It's an open issue. I'm talking about the background, it's an open issue with the county at this point in time, but it's not an open issue with the Division of Rock Mining Safety. It specifies it has to be investigated. Only way that you can get that changed, I suppose, mine land use change from designated end use at this point, it has to go through change with the Division of Rock Mining Safety. So there's two restrictions, not restriction, I'm gonna say two things that have to be done. You have to get permission from state, and you also have to get permission from the county. So there's two approval processes.
Did I miss any questions?
Okay, again, folks, I'm gonna have you not put your comments in the chat. You can raise your hand if you'd like to ask another question. And then questions need to be asked to Planning Commission, and then we can, go ahead, Ruth, if you wanna ask.
Yes, I would ask you to please ask Mr. Michael if he'll address the number. if he'll address the number of trucks expected to be used at the Leadville mill because these trucks are going to be additional to the trucks being used for the slag project. So it seems to me that we could have maybe 80 trucks a day traveling our roads.
Okay, I, I would like to. I would like to keep a prospective permits or applications off of the topic of conversation tonight because if there is a future mill proposal that comes to us and they ask for 80 trucks or they ask for three trucks, that will be addressed at that time. It's not something that we can use as a factor in determining tonight's decision. It would, however, or tonight's decision could impact that one down the road. And, and that's something the applicant has to be aware of is that if, if the planning commission and the county commissioners ultimately decided to approve, you know, 20 trucks, then down the road, they could say no more trucks. So we can't, we can't, we can't take into account a possible application that could be out there that could add, add, add that stuff to it at this time. The, I, I would like a, a quick clarification. Then I'm gonna ask fellow planning commission members and county commissioners. But I think the, the 20 to the 40 trucks is, is starting to be a little bit confusing. To me, a truck coming to your site to load had to get there and then it has to leave there. And that's counted as two trips. But it's not counted as two trucks. So just to clarify to everybody, it's, that's counted as two trips there. So your 40 trips is still that one truck that drove to the site, loaded up, and then left. So I think there's a little bit of confusion there. I'm not sure how else that would have happened, how that truck would get filled and then leave without having to get there first. So I think that that's maybe a little bit of confusion amongst folks. And hopefully that, that helps clarify that just a little bit, that we're not talking about a double number of trucks. We're just talking that those trucks obviously have to get there and then leave, which counts as two trips on the property. So that clarification really quick. And then I will go through any planning commission members that would like to ask applicant any questions. Go ahead and do so.
Yeah, I just have one, and it's just a process question. How do CDPHE and DRMS perform the site inspections? So they, do they come and inspect the site itself? How often do they do that? And, you know, is there a report that we get from that? Or what, I guess that's the frequency really.
George, you wanna take a shot at that one?
Yeah. DRMS does it on there based on the complexities of the property. I can see when you get miller on, they're gonna go up on a quarterly basis. On the slag, which is the less impacted, they'll do it once a year. CDPHE is a different situation. CDPHE can come out on that site anytime they want to. They don't have given notifications. They can just show up. So when we take a look at how often it is, they were just recently on site, even though they're not in operation. They'll come back before operation begins. When it gets operated, they may take, they may come in once, once a month. They may come in once a week, we don't know. So it's totally up to them. So if a neighbor has a question, they want an inspection, they could do that. So basically, it's a glass house when they're talking about reviewing the CDPHE. Also, when DRMS gets a complaint or concern, they will come out also and address their concern. So when you take a look at the number of inspections, I'm gonna see, now, we're gonna have other agencies come up there. So if we got MSHA that we're talking about, they'll come on site as well. CDOT, they come back and do their inspections. They, they will do the evaluation. So when you talk about accessibility, any, any agency, it's, they have the right to come on just about anytime they want to.
Yeah, and I, MSHA as well. And MSHA didn't show up anytime they want. And same with CDPHE, they, they, they typically, they'll, they'll, they might have once a year where they tell you they're coming, but they have the right to show up at any time unannounced as well.
Also, not only the inspections, there's routine monitoring reports that are going on a more frequent basis. So I mean, it's, it's pretty, pretty administratively.
Right. And they all have administrative control. If they come up and, and we're operating at that moment with a violation, they will do a cease and desist immediately. They will shut us down and then fine us and we go through that whole process. So, so we're really encouraged to operate under the rules.
Violation of the Water Quality Act, $1,000 is there. It's not.
Not in your interest.
It's not trivial.
Not in our interest.
Jamie, do you have any questions?
Uh, yeah, I've got a few questions for Mr. Michael. I appreciate you saying that 15 years is kind of the max for this project. And that's obviously subject to market demand insofar as how much is moving through. I'm curious to know a little bit more just about the aggregate business. I know, I guess what I'm worried about is let's say we get halfway through the pile and then nobody wants anymore. What does reclamation look like at that point? Or do you just walk away from a half cleaned up, very big slag pile?
When that happens, there's a bond in place. And the bond is basically taken by the state. And they will, they will actually implement the reclamation claim that is already been squared. So they'll cover it up, do whatever is necessary. What I'm talking about, they'll grade it and they'll put some kind of education, some kind of alternative use. But it will be in their court, but they also have a lot of money to be able to do what they need to do based on the requirements.
Are you implying that they would remove it completely as you would? Or is that a, is that their purview?
Well, they could, they could move, remove it. I mean, they'll take in the consideration of the county. Don't worry about it. They're not gonna come out here getting approval from the county because it's in their best interest to make sure the county's decision process is taken into account. Well, it's, now, from the standpoint, here's the other issue here. If that ever happens, other permits can be revoked. So the DRMS comes in here and said, okay, you've got to clean it up or you don't got. And you say, well, I don't want to do it anymore. And he said, well, I'm gonna revoke the other permits. They could do that. It's pretty punitive when you take a look at being, if you aren't responsible, they're making you responsible. And that's, that's my position.
Thank you. I haven't done the math on 15 years times 400 tons a day, but do you know roughly how deep those piles are? If you do take it all the way down to the dirt?
So you can kind of imagine where the surface is.
It's just a grade they didn't carry.
Yeah, so as soon as we hit topsoil, we're done. There, there will be no hole there.
Okay.
It'll be just, you know, whatever the original country is.
Awesome, thank you. When we're talking about trucks and traffic, again, I don't exactly know what the market demand is for the times when you would need more than four trucks per hour. You have a rough idea if you're gonna make that request to us once a year, once a month, once a week. And I get that that is an answer we don't know the answer to. But again, I don't understand the business. So if you could just help me understand.
Typically, when you're done moving that, you're gonna go in the spring where the volume's gonna be because of getting in construction mode. So the busiest time's gonna be this. Be able to get that contract, those contracts in place and be able to get a schedule, you better have a good idea before. So, and with that said, you will know what anticipated on the contract that would be at that point in time. Worst case.
You think we might get a couple of months worth of requests at one time to approve? Or these are ad hoc? Again, I'm just, don't understand.
But the question, and the question is a matter of, usually when you make the contracts, they're basically getting their aggregate lined up months ahead of time. And during the winter, that's when they basically come out, okay, use this project.
So it's projected for the summer. Like, we know we have this big project, so we're gonna need, this, this is gonna be our schedule likely in July.
I just, since we had a lot of public comment asking about the number of trucks, if we're able to say, okay, here's the three month plan and here's the six red days or whatever.
I think that's fair because we are gonna get our orders ahead of time. So we will have a, a really good idea of what our summer's gonna be looking like. And, and we could share that with you ahead of time. So you know what's, what's coming. And, and then we can deal with it.
And we're gonna sell, really, sell ballast. And there's a lot of flexibility on how you move trucks. You could say, okay, I'm not gonna pull it out during this month. And there's stockpile it. And then when you want it, we'll move it offsite. We can actually work with the county to minimize the amount of trucks going on the road based on the client's needs. You can work, wrap that up.
Right, but, but eventually the trucks do need to go.
Sure. I just wonder if there's lots of days that there's gonna be a convoy of 12 trucks all leaving your site at once? How we can communicate that to our citizens and how frequently that happens? And it sounds like, obviously, it would be easy to have a schedule and it would be easy to tell us the schedule and then.
Yeah, well, we have a, a capacity, right? And, and our, our capacity is maybe loading four trucks in an hour. And, and that's all we can load. And I'm just throwing a number out, but I don't like that number. But it's not gonna be like 10 trucks or six trucks. There's no way we can load six trucks an hour with the equipment that we have on site. We only have one loader.
Well, you could cash trucks is what it sounds like and send them all out at a certain time, which is what you would need to ask us permission for.
Exactly, exactly. And, and, and we can try to coordinate when those trucks go out at different times of the day as well. And, and, you know, maybe there's times that are more suitable than other times. So, so there is flexibility in that. And, you know, someone made a comment about, you know, how does that work? How do you control that day to day? And, and, you know, it's a fair question that's asked. And, and we can't honestly answer that because, you know, a day to day, it's gonna be a little bit different. And that's why we ask for that flexibility, right? To be able to do more than we think we're gonna need to do. And then when it becomes really critical, those would be the times that we would come to. But this is not, you know, this is a small operation, everyone. This is not a huge quarry operation. This is, it's a very limited resource. We're gonna have millions and millions of tons. We have just over 1 million tons of material there. Like 1.1, 1.2, depending on the surveys. But it's a number like that. So, so, you know, we're, we're, we're almost gonna be like a niche market, right?
Cool, thanks, that's very helpful. Just one more question, if I may. Mr. Michael, in your presentation, you talked about adding a handful of higher than average paying jobs. And I'm sure you're aware that the housing prices is pretty real here. And I'm just curious if you could speak to what the anticipated salaries or wages might be for those positions? Where you think those people are gonna come from? And if they aren't coming from Leadville, where do you think they're gonna live?
We anticipate bringing people that are local onto the payroll. We, we don't anticipate bringing people outside of Leadville.
Okay, and are these just machine operator positions?
It would be, yeah, there would be machine operator positions and maybe an administrative position. You know, like keeping track of inventory, tracking trips per day, weight scales. So it'd be like an office, office type of environment. Sitting next to, you know, on a computer, working in an office, office type. And can I get to you on the salaries? I don't remember the salaries, George.
It's determined to be determined because, you know, it's what they go with the requirement. Okay, when they take that, you know, salaries, we could.
We will get back to you on that.
Okay.
Okay.
Cool, well, I think.
It's a fair question. And we should have been prepared for that. I apologize.
It's fine, I look forward to your answer. Even if it's a range, you know, that's what they even pay for you to work against.
We will provide that.
And it's encouraging to hear that these folks will already live here because, like I said, housing is a crazy issue. And just so you know, we're having problems staffing our landfill right now with qualified operators. So I don't think there's a huge available amount of employees. And in the absence of that, if you're importing people, that affects our housing situation.
Look, that is, that is something that we've not overlooked. You know, I think that from a technical perspective, you know, bringing in, hiring a labor force is, is probably one of our biggest challenges from a technical perspective.
Thank you very much.
And, yeah, and we do, you know, we talked a little bit about housing. And, and, you know, we, we, we can explore those. We can have discussions with, with the staff on that. Because we have thought about this. So we can, we have some ideas, but, you know, they're just ideas. I don't think that this is the right form for that.
Howard Trix, do you have any questions?
I do have one question concerning the process. Being in mining for 30 years, I'm pretty familiar, especially in the metallurgy and the crushing and milling. I, maybe I missed the point about crushing. I know they're going to, they'll have screens and they'll screen the products. And, but the crusher, are they going to move in a portable crusher to get it down to a certain mesh? I, I would like to know that answer, please.
Yeah, correct, Howard. What we're gonna do is we're gonna get a portable crusher. And, and we're gonna set up a spot wherever it is we need, we, we need it to be to make our, wherever the product is and wherever we need to make it. So, and, and then the screens will be adjusted for that run for what, for what size fractions we need. But yeah, it'll be a portable crusher and it'll move around the site to where it's needed. And then the, and then once it's set up, then the, the sprayers, the water sprayers will be set up around it. And then, of course, the water sprayers will also be set up around the, the, the dozer. That's, that's the, or, or the excavator, in terms of the case.
Thank you.
Lupe, do you have any questions?
No, not at the moment. It was about employment as well. I was just more curious about where the folks are gonna be coming from to work on this project. But Jamie asked a question, so I appreciate the, the thorough and detailed answer.
Commissioner Marcella?
Yeah, I just have a quick question about the encapsulated standard operating procedure. It's referenced in the staff report and I can see it in the, in the committee application. But I was wondering if you could just elaborate on that?
If encapsulated, it would be defined by EPA first of all. You have, when I talk, it's any material that's size 3/8 inch. So we're talking about the fines. The fines can be used for asphalt, concrete, or it could be used for road mix. So it's basically moving encapsulated by an asphalt cover. Also, the fines can be used for bedding material, like ones. Or if you have a foundation and you're building a foundation for your house, you could use it for setting your, whatever your foundation is called. But when we're talking about those types of things encapsulated, maybe you really have. You've asked a very good question because this is also one of the things that Anna asked us to make sure we've covered is basically, how do you know where that material is formed? Well, basically, it's required in our, our log books and our, our standard operating procedures in the operation. You have to stipulate what the end use is gonna be. If you go out with 3/8 inch material, it's covered. But basically, anything less than 3/8 inch, the fines, you have to stipulate the end use. And we'll have contracts with the individuals that that particular end use will be used for a specific endpoint. So, and that's gonna be documented because that's required for the report, the NDA. And we're trying to be able to say that, you're gonna be able to come out on a, on a, on a site. If you come out here on a daily basis, we're gonna have track of everything that goes out of that rock. Because it's in our best interest. Because it's in our best interest. It's in, and, and the community, don't get me wrong.
Um, I just want a clarification on that and then, um, stipulated with the reclamation process and what would be accepted by DRMS, correct?
That's correct.
Not sure much. Um, I actually don't have any other questions for the applicant and to take the time. But since it is such a highly, uh, high interest and, and there is a lot of concern, I just want to also kind of restate, um, you know, how well county staff and the commissioners and leadership works with partners and regulatory agencies like CPHG and DRMS. We had a longstanding Leadled Work Group through Public Health. We have Leo Pransel that has aided staff both in land use, public works, and also others doing remediation work over the last few decades. And so there is not, there is not a lack of investment from CPHG in Lake County and health and health. And there is a lack of the professional relationships that the county has with these agencies. Should we have concerns or any other reasons for the agencies to come? There is ongoing work with the landfill and well monitoring and leaching and drainage. There's ongoing work with the sanitation district. There's ongoing work to fill in stopes and, and sinkholes up on the east side and work with our Lake County Initiative partners. So I, I just want to make sure to say that as, to try to give the public the encouragement that, and the confidence that we hear you and we also are keeping, the chair put it very well, keeping these, keeping these uses very separate. And perhaps considering the advantage of having a site. Because I don't think anybody is stepping up to spend public dollars necessarily to do that. Especially if it might take 15 years. I do, I have a question for staff really that I just love to work with on. I am very curious about, you know, any way that we can continue the conversation with Leo Pransel and maybe figure out a, a little bit more definitive. I hesitate to say agreement, but, but have a conversation of, you know, alternate hauling routes that can alleviate that congestion through downtown. I understand that CDAT does not have a concern on Highway 24. I do wonder, you know, what upcoming conversations would happen with CDAT regarding the frequency in which they look to repave and, and maintain Highway 24 through Lake County, given any additional hauling. But I do, I just, I would, I would like to kind of have that conversation with Anne and perhaps Leo Pransel on, you know, what, what might a good expectation, a reasonable, I don't even know if it's a condition, but what, what could be reasonable to say, you know, when the county is ready to do some infrastructure improvements? Because we don't have any county roads that can handle this kind of haul route, other than Highway 24. That would degrade our roads very significantly and swiftly. But how, how can we create a plan to that? And for those improvements in the near future, I think. Because I only think that it is going to, uh, traffic is going to increase whether or not we're talking about light, commercial, heavy industrial or, or something.
Commissioner Feeler, if you're still on there, actually, I don't know if it is. I feel like you maybe have to go. Um, yeah.
One more thing, I just, the other thing, DRMS, I think these guys have touched on it, but even if an APEN were, were not required for the emissions, the dust control is still, it heavy, there are requirements for all those dust control, like the landfill, you know, like in your application, anything 20 miles per hour or more, they wouldn't be able to be operating moving material.
Correct.
And then water would always be applied to the operations and the activity going on.
That applies to us.
Yeah.
Over, over certain, is it 20 miles per hour?
25.
25, yeah, we have to shut down.
The landfill is 36, but that's just, I mean, we're not.
I think we're 25.
I thought, I thought I read in your application it was 20. But there are ways, I mean, you monitor, we have a monitoring.
We have a very good representative.
Yeah, I don't, I think a couple of people already asked the questions that I had. I think just to echo slightly what Sarah said. I think this, this job on the planning commission, we run into this frequently where it's, we have to depend on the experts that know the things. And, and I know that can be scary. I know air quality is super scary, scary for all of us. And, um, but at the end of the day, I know nothing about that and how to mitigate it. And therefore, I have to depend on the agencies that have lots, lots of experience dealing with that and trust that they are taking care of us and partnering with us. And like Sarah said, we have no lack of them partnering with Lake County in the past. And I think that that's really, really important to know. That this planning commission, the county commissioners, whatever decision gets made here, I think it's just really important to know that those things are considered and are super important to everybody. Which is why Anne does such a great job reaching out to those different agencies and asking for those referrals because we need to rely on that expertise from those agencies to help us. Not only with the processing of an application like this, but if, if this were to be approved, to continue monitoring it and continue keeping an eye on it and making sure that things are functioning the way that they're supposed to be to, for safety and, um, just enjoyment of the community. So I, I just wanted to make that, you know, kind of quick statement that I think a lot of times, that's, that's missed just a, just a little bit, that those, those partnerships are so important to us. And please know that we don't take decisions like that lightly as far as reaching out to them for information and reliance on their expertise for that, so. With that, are there any other questions from County Commissioners Planning Commission before I do a motion or accept a motion to close public hearing?
Can I add a line to make a comment?
If you make a quick one.
Okay. We are planning a site visit with our state regulator, with CDPHE and with EPA. And CRMS. Like the week of the 18th and 19th of October. If you guys would, I don't know if this is out of line, I'm just going to, I'm just going to say.
If a decision's getting made tonight, then it is. Unless you'd like us to table this and wait for that meeting?
I rescind it.
Okay. Any other questions?
Now I move to close public hearing.
Second motion.
Okay, I'm in favor of closing public hearing.
Aye.
Aye.
Have a really great evening.
I did make some changes in the, I added.
So now the county commissioners are going to leave, but we are going to go into deliberations. You're welcome to stay, we just can't accept any more public comment. You're welcome to hear our deliberations and hear what we do and what our recommendations to county commissioners will be. Or you're also welcome to go home and enjoy your evening, so whatever's good for you. Just want to, clarification on process. I feel like people are leaving and thinking that it was over and.
It's just beginning.
I just, yeah, I just wrote in the things that you guys talked about. So I would say that A through D, I just really wanted to answer those. And so just a clarification, who could read number? I added in evidence about standing items have been satisfied by the consent. And then I did, uh, the applicant.
Yeah, I saw you write that.
Air monitoring thing. So they're just in there if someone wants to use my cheat sheet at any point.
Cool.
Um, does anybody want to make a motion to start this conversation?
Can, can we talk about this without a motion or are you saying that?
We can, I mean, typically you'll make a motion and then there'll be discussion, something, and then there'll be discussion on the motion.
Okay, I have a few things I'd like to talk about.
Yeah, go ahead.
Adding, but I don't know if that.
Oh, sure, go ahead, yeah.
Uh, I don't know where that goes.
No, go ahead, go ahead, yeah.
In the process. I'm super glad to have the air quality monitoring thing in there. One thing they also mentioned is changing the traffic report from a annual to a weekly thing. I think that is, if they're willing to do that, that will satisfy a lot of the traffic people.
Staff has a comment. The capacity for staff to, that weekly is, that's, monthly might be okay, but weekly is, that's, it's really.
I mean, I would almost go to quarterly. Because I'm like, I mean, it, it's stated numerous times that their capacity per day is really just this, you know, what there are. Right, and so it's like very infrequently would they be asking to readjust that? So as long as we're getting some kind of monitoring like quarterly, then I feel like then we can see if there's anything getting out of line. But, and making adjustments, but I just.
I still feel like that lines up more with what the reports are going to be, other agencies as well are. So we might be able to look at it quarter by quarter and have more than one data point to.
Sure, if at all. I, I just think traffic has the most immediate effect on our population. And that's what most of the public comments were about. And if we're able just to say, listen, we're looking at it monthly, not even having a discussion about it, but just, okay, it's been an average of 18 trucks a day or whatever and they're allowed for 20. And I appreciate Anne that it takes a non-zero amount of time to intercept and to, to publish that. And I don't think we, I don't know that we need to make a huge deal about it. But the more frequently that they're able to report that to us, whatever our frequency is.
Well, to clarify, it's not going to get reported to us.
Sure, I mean, to staff.
Yeah, and then what are we going to ask staff to do with that report will be the next piece to that question.
Sure.
And I would just, the other thing is, there's, there's a second caveat, just, just for discussion. The, the reporting is one part, but any identified issues regarding negative impacts to cities? So that's pretty wide open, whether those would be identified would certainly be taken in complaint either from the city itself, city government, or, or residents. And then bring that before we run a session and deciding if that's a main point to revisit that. There's, there's a second part to it, it's not just the monitoring of the junk volume and the information that would come from the applicant. It would also be on a complaint basis too.
Okay, I mean, I guess.
Difficult hearing you people on Zoom.
Okay.
Sorry, Howard, we'll try and speak up and we'll all look at that thing. I think it would be helpful for our citizens just to see even a little line graph on average trucks a day and on whatever the interval is that we update that. That might just be helpful. And I don't know, kind of after all of these go through, what your process is for communicating that with the public. Obviously to see if he's going to get published somewhere.
It gets recorded. And we don't typically monitor CUPs on like an online basis.
Okay.
Usually, that information is absolutely available in our office anytime someone wants to check. Like currently, there's other operations that have to do annual reports. Concerned citizens come in and ask to see those reports, but we don't, we don't upload those currently. I'm not saying that that could be something that was done. But annual reports are obviously an easier place to maybe eventually have them online.
Okay.
But, but usually when there's a complaint that comes in, somebody will want to come in, they'll want to look at the file, they'll want to look at that particular report. So the first line of contact is usually with staff. And then we, you know, provide that information. So we, we haven't ever, you know, something has a, two, I'm sorry, I think it's something else, I think, but, conditional use permits that have to have an annual report. And we take them in, we have them, they'll go in the office and there's some of the flyers. But we've never really uploaded those annual reports. They're more for, you know, and kind of revisit them based on complaints and negative impacts that have been come through as complaints and then investigate them before they're awarded.
Cool, that's super helpful. I think quarterly is fine. And however it gets, like I said, it's like your phone's ringing off the book with whatever the questions are. So we don't need to proactively spend a lot of your time.
I would imagine, and I would imagine that the front end of this would be, the first couple of years will be the most concerning just to see what, like, you know, what those impacts are really, what they're actually felt.
Sure.
And then maybe we can do a little research if we manage to.
Right, if they say 10 to 14% and it's in that range.
Can you guys on Zoom hear us? Are we talking loud enough? If he says yes, okay. Well, Howard just can't hear us.
Okay, I will, when I talk, I'll, I'll face forward.
I'm sorry, we can't take any more public comment.
Towards microphone, please.
Okay. Is that better, Howard, when I face forward?
Thank you so much.
Well, thanks, Anne.
Um, so how do you fit, what do you, what do, what?
I, I have a couple of comments just on what I went through.
Do we want to do quarterly?
Can we add, can we add quarterly traffic reports?
Absolutely.
To the list of need to provide us with?
Okay, you're done.
I'm good.
Sorry. Yeah, I just wanted to say, um, a research on this, I came in with an open mind. I know a lot about mining, but very little about slag and remediation. So I appreciate the thoroughness you had in your application. You know, I think the reasons we have to deny it for health, safety, welfare reasons. And I just, I think that all of my concerns were addressed and assuaged, especially the air quality control. I think the fact that just because you have an exemption doesn't mean you're exempt from air quality controls is, was what I needed to hear and kind of hear some more detail on. So I think this becomes a land use and zoning question. And I did a lot of research on that, you know? And every document I find going back to the 1960s shows that this area has been designated for industrial mining purposes. A lot of that's to do with the history of the land because this was super intensively used with no cleanup or remediation. And so I, to address one of the members of the public, what his comment kind of struck me, it was just, industrial mining is the highest and best use of this land in lieu of remediation. That's the only way we can create this land to have a different use. And so I think this is a pretty interesting use case. And, um, yeah, I, I appreciate your time and application. And it was really interesting to read through and learn more about.
Uh, Lupe, any?
Uh, and then, I appreciate the conversation and I, I was just thinking about the report and I would appreciate to have it quarterly because, um, I don't know, like as Heather, you were mentioning about that information, like once folks get that information, once they see that information, uh, what would happen, right? Like, uh, what goes on with people who are concerned or voicing, um, issues with the, the situation that's going on? Like the trucks coming in and out. And I, I think, I don't know, like if we were to produce a monthly one, people would, um, start voicing concerns. But it's also, right, like, uh, do we, how do we navigate those conversations with, with, um, the public, right? Like when they're start voicing concerns, but it's within the scope of the, uh, of the job that they, they're, the Board of County Commissioners and as well as us, we approved, right? Like that it's within their realm and people are complaining about like the job. How do we navigate those kind of, navigate conversations?
Well, so I think that's it, right? As long as they're acting within the purview of their conditional use permit, there, there isn't. But the, the complaints would come from, uh, those reports documenting them not staying within those guidelines. And so that would just simply be that concerned citizens could go in and take a look at it and assuming everything is going as it's supposed to, they can just have confirmation that it is. If it isn't, then that's where the county would, you know, they would technically be in violation of their conditional use permit.
Thank you, Heather.
All right, anybody want to make a motion?
My hands up.
Okay, sorry, I thought, I thought you were clapping for, it's okay. You all take your clapping.
It's two hands, he really wants to speak.
Go for it.
It's a hand, that's all. Anyway, um, the one thing I think we got to realize is the fact that this isn't the first time that we moved that slag before. You newbies don't have, weren't here at that time. But there's a lot of trucks going back and forth hauling that slag for the railroad. Of course, railroad's down now. But, and that seemed to be no problems. So, yeah. So, yeah, I, I think the quarterly thing is good, we've got to monitor it, but it may be not as much a problem as we think. Um, of course, the other thing, since COVID, we have a lot more traffic on the roads than we had before. And is that going to last? I, it's hard to say, but, but the other thing I look at is how, how cow gut, gulch has changed in the last decade and a half. It's got, commercialization has advanced west tremendously. If that slag pile was gone, we might have another grocery store or something else, but that's something we, eh, we got to think about. You're going to have to have room if we're going to grow, which looks like we are, we got to have room for these places. And the other thing, I know that the, my, my dealing in the mines, I know that you're very much watched by EPA, MSHA, Colorado Board of Health, et cetera, et cetera. So there, you know, you can't get away with anything. So I, um, just wanted to bring those few comments up before somebody made the motion. Thank you.
Thanks, Howard. Yeah, I mean, I, I, uh, I like, uh, the circular economy piece of this. I really like the fact that not only are we remediating the land in a situation like this, but we're able to use it for something. Um, I mean, how often are we able to do that? Um, I mean, only somebody can figure out how to do that with plastic, it'd be amazing. But, um, yeah, I mean, I really love that. I think that obvi, the obvious concerns of traffic and air quality are absolutely valid and I understand them, but I too feel confident in the experts involved and, um, in their thoughts and their monitoring of, of those situations. Um, so I feel pretty good about it as well. I, I, I love the idea of, um, that land being able to be used because Leadville is inevitably growing and right now it's not necessarily growing in a super sustainable way. Love to have our locals be able to work in town and if we have more properties available for that kind of job force, that's fantastic. So, um, yeah, I really, I really like the prospect of this and, uh, hope that it's successful and hope that it does operate within their parameters. All right, so.
Who wants to read?
Anybody want her, want the cheat sheets?
Jamie. I, I'll take a stab at it.
I think I can read my writing, but I think.
Yeah. So I'm reading from here, including.
And then just going to.
Starting here.
Yeah, take out all the rest, yeah.
But then reading all of those parts.
Yeah.
Okay, great, just want to make sure it's correct.
Take a big breath.
Same, yeah, take a little bit of a breath.
Okay, y'all ready for this?
We are.
I move that the planning commission recommend conditional approval to the Board of County Commissioners, file number 22 dash 22, a conditional use permit application for extractive mining of slag as aggregate at Southwest one quarter section 27 T9SR80W and Northwest one quarter section 34 T9SR80W of the sixth PM adjacent to and north and east of the Leadville sanitation facility on Highway 24, 1.5 miles west of Leadville on 56 of a total of 92 acres pursuant to the standards of section 5.2.5 extractive operations including mining. Further finding that the approval criteria pursuant to Lake County Land Development Code section 3.6.1.1F have been met as evidenced in the staff report dated September 19th, 2022 for file number 22 dash 22, the conditions for approval are, in the, I do the one or I skip it?
No, no.
Scott, okay, the conditions for approval are, number two, prior to the start of operations, a fully signed and issued CDOT access permit is submitted. Number three, a copy of CJK's fine slag buyer purchase agreement document be submitted for the file. Number four, a copy of UMC's handbook be submitted for the file. Number five, a copy of the location survey and subsequent engineer's report concerning the structure agreement with Leadville sanitation be submitted for the file when it is completed. Number six, a copy of the structure agreement with Leadville sanitation be submitted for the file when it is completed and evidenced all outstanding items have been satisfied. Number seven, prior to the start of operations, a final and completed copy of the DRMS 112C permit be submitted. Number eight, the proposed, the proposal projects the haul route will be split approximately 50/50 between trucks leaving the site in either a northern or southern direction. The applicant shall prepare a quarterly report identifying the amount of truck traffic traveling through the city of Leadville. Should it result in more than 70% of the total off-site haul traffic and/or any identified issues regarding negative impacts to the city, the county reserves the right to revisit the matter with the applicant to explore any possible mitigation. Number nine, the operation shall be limited pursuant to CDOT's access permit to four trucks either in or out of the site per hour with no more than 20 trips per day. CJK may request a temporary increase in the trips per day based on market demand. The BOCC will consider these requests during a regular meeting. Number 10, the operation will operate Monday through Saturday during community events when Harrison Avenue is closed, the city of Leadville portion of the truck route will be closed. 11, should Lake County determine a bypass route is a feasible approach to mitigating traffic congestion, the applicant and the county shall revisit the haul truck route in a collaborative manner. 12, prior to the start of operations but not necessarily the start of site preparations, applicant shall consult with the Department of Public Health and Environment Air Quality Control Division to determine which is necessary, an APEN, a permit or an exemption as the case may be, and submit a copy of the same to the county. 13, all representations made in the application in the hearing shall be considered as conditions of approval. 14, pursuant to section 5.2.5R, if the use has not been operated or if no material has been extracted within three years of obtaining the conditional use permit and a request for extension has not been received and approved by the Board of County Commissioners, the conditional use permit will expire. Extension requires, extension requests shall provide information concerning the factors and reasons for the request. Board of County Commissioners will consider these factors and reasons as well as the extent conditions have changed in the area, if any, in granting extensions. 15, applicant shall provide air monitoring stations on the west side of the proposed operational parcel, providing monthly reports to Lake County. Second.
Second, great. For quick clarification, just for the record, number, condition number one was removed and such there, the numbering will be adjusted on the actual condition. No, you're good.
Okay.
Just for clarification on the record. Okay, uh, any discussion on the motion? I'm going to do roll call, Howard trips.
Approve.
So.
Aye.
Uh, Lupe Bobadilla.
Aye.
Miss Cypher.
Aye.
Heatherland, aye. Motion carries. Uh, this is a recommendation to the county commissioners, this now goes to their next, next meeting, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Um, and they will make the final determination at that time. Uh, anything else?
You have anything else? Uh, let's see.
Thank you all, it's been a great service.
I know.
Been a pleasure serving with all of you.
Thank you, Russ.
I'm going to be working for Ann now, so.
Yeah.
Be on this board.
You're, you're like seeing the last of me.
Yeah. I'll just be on the other side.
Um, I think the only other thing to let everyone know, October 10th, I'm looking to do a work session, um, on a few items, and then October 24th will be a accessory dwelling unit CUP and a, our very first Backcountry site plan review.
Cool.
Excited to see other stuff.
It's me.
It is me.
Oh, great. Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I move to adjourn tonight's meeting.
A second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, for your participation and we have some people left, so.